Okay, we have, just so people know, for councilpeople, we have Councilperson Falcom, Councilperson Moyer, Councilperson Woodley, Mayor Duran, Councilperson Sulla, Councilperson Walrick. One, two, three, four, five, six. So the only one we are waiting for is Councilperson Friedmeier, which I have not heard from. So I'm assuming he's calling in or will be joining us somehow.
Okay. We can give him a second here.
I can, once we get, I don't know if everybody can, can everybody see the total number of participants and who's all on? Okay, good. Thanks, Brian.
No.
I believe there's a participants button down along the bottom. Do you see that?
Yeah.
If you click on that, you should be able to see who's.
Oh, okay.
And if, if you're trying to see everybody's faces at once, if you go to the upper right, there's either a speaker view or gallery view. Gallery view will give you everybody sort of Brady Bunch style.
Brady Bunch, that's good.
So who does that make me? Am I Alice in this lineup? We could probably get started if Jeff is, if John is trying to get on, you know, there may be a Zoom issue. I know Lisa prompted all of us to do that update, but mine was a little tricky, so. And I see we have one more person joining.
I won't announce because not everybody has been there.
Right.
But if they, we can announce that public comment, Mayor, that they can just announce their name to, to be added, so. Are we live on the TV? Okay, we are live on the TV, so we are, we are good to go.
All right. Very good. I'll call to order the June 2 meeting of the Wabashaw City Council, and we will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. And I have to stand because it's the way it's done. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America. And to the Republic.
Under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yes, there's a special, there should be a special note taken when you participate in a public meeting and begin with the Pledge of Allegiance, you better have pants on. I wasn't checking, but I just, to these meetings. I don't believe we have any guest speakers, Chad?
No.
Okay. For a public comment, so we have several members of the public, it appears, and Chad went over this, but I'll repeat it. In order to speak, please identify yourself and your address, as we would do in regular City Hall chamber, and make sure that you're unmuted. If you're trying to speak and you're not, no one's responding to you, you may be muted. And you can do that on the lower left, next to your own image, there's a little microphone. If it's red with an X through it, then you're muted. If you click that, you will be unmuted. So we would take public comment at this time. Chad, I don't know, we haven't, we haven't had much public comment in the past. Do you want to read somebody's name from the list if they're not councillor, or how do you, how would you like to do that?
I would think if they just state their name, we'll call on them, because I'm not sure if they're here for public comment or just to listen.
Yeah, sounds good. So if anybody would like to unmute themselves and state their name for the record, we'd love to hear from you.
This is KK. I'm at 224 Third Street East, and this is a public comment. When I was looking today at the list of what I call expenses, I believe that you call council warrants, I noticed that one, you know, financial assistance was 593894 for Ike and Myers. Is that just for the accounting review that the city did last council meeting, or do they also give some advice as to how expenses might be able to use, be used more to promote the community or for other, is it just, I just want to try to figure out, do they give us any help to whatever we can do to create value for the community as well?
So the Abdo Ike and Myers invoice is what you're questioning. Typically, we don't in public comments, but I'll respond to this one. It's a pertinent item on the agenda. And allowing people in as we're speaking here, there's still people joining. But that, that item, that $5,000 is just a portion of the total amount that we pay them annually to be our auditors. The total contract for this year is, and don't quote me on the number exactly, but it's right in the $28,000 range. They are an independent auditor for the city of Wabashaw. They don't give us advice on how to spend money in marketing and things like that. They are simply our independent auditor to, that's hired by the council to go through and audit the financials to ensure that they are represented fairly to the public, so.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else wish to make a comment? Just please identify yourself and then go right ahead. All right, I'm hearing none, but that might be somebody struggling with their mute, so I'll give it a second here. Again, if you've just joined and you'd like to make a public comment, if you look to the lower left where your image is on the screen, or your name, or your spouse's name, depending on this computer you're using, you'll see a little red microphone that has a slash through it. If you click that, that will unmute you, and you can feel free to identify yourself and share any public comment you would have. We apologize, this type of thing is inherently awkward in Zoom. Zoom really wasn't created for this type of a meeting, but I'm not hearing any. If for some reason you're not able to get through and you are trying to make a comment, please just hover at the bottom, and you'll see a chat window, and if you click that, you can type into it, and chat or somebody else on staff will monitor that. We can always interrupt if we need to. You can interrupt my mayor's message here in a second. Okay. Otherwise, I don't hear any other desire for public comment. Do we have any changes or additions to the agenda?
We need to add a, to the warrants, the annual script, excuse me, the annual subscription fee of $500 to FSS Solutions, or FS Solutions, which handles our employee drug tests that are required by MnDOT.
Okay. Sounds good. We'll go to the warrants, and then I'd like to add an item related to recreation facilities. We have a beach that's currently open, and we have a splash pad that's not, and I think we should just have a little chat about that. I've had some conversation with staff and the public throughout the week, so we can make that item general business 10-4.
Excuse me, did we have roll call? I had some problems.
I'm so sorry. It kind of, it's so awkward in this setting. We kind of did, but we should call. We have all members of council present, except councilmember Friedmeier, who I don't, I still don't see.
Yeah, he's texted me, he is having issues.
Okay. All right, so he may join us still. Any other additions or changes to the agenda? Okay, I have a hopefully brief message. This has been a very difficult and frankly, kind of a front in our country, and I just wanted to write this down, both for the Herald, who sometimes requests my statements in writing, and I hardly ever do write them, but also because it's really been hard for me to think about what these recent days mean for our society and our communities. I'll just read it. "In the last eight days, society has endured and expressed deep pain over the death of George Floyd. The surrounding context of racism and injustice is at once shocking and yet wearily familiar. In response, we've seen peaceful and insistent demands to both honor the life suddenly lost and to protest all that is broken in our society. As night has fallen on this troubling string of days, the hope seen in peaceful protests and acts of neighbors loving their neighbors were repeatedly drowned out by those whose opportunism caused devastating destruction. The unfolding of this complex series of traumas still continues in cities across the nation. As I write this now, we know that the story will continue both in Minnesota and around the world, and I offer no quick solutions to the acute for the deep stain of racism and violence in a country that boasts of its love of life and liberty. I can only commit to listen and learn how I and others might cooperate to continuously unravel a longstanding culture of discrimination and oppression. For any city that does not see that there is work to do, this week's events should serve as a sobering reminder, and I hope you'll join me in this pursuit as neighbors. In light of all this, I would be remiss if I did not say how incredibly grateful I was for today's newspaper, which was filled with good news, and specifically how proud I am to see the youth in our cities contributing to the resilience of the community and the economy as members of the workforce. Hopefully, many have found roles that will inspire future goals and serve them their whole lives. Through all the challenges we face now and ahead, they add measurably to our strength in difficult yet hopeful times. As a practical matter, the governor's executive orders allow reopening of several places of public accommodation as of Monday. I've seen more adoption of masks while out and about, and I know businesses that reopen have their own policies for the public to consider. We're very eager to resume some of the areas previously restricted, and I know we can all be respectful of those policies to protect their employees as well as all of us." And now I'll ask for committee reports, I'm going to get back to my agenda here. Committee reports on Wabashaw, good news. Let's see, do we have, Tony, do we have anything you'd like to share with us from, from parks or streets?
I do not at this time. We have not been meeting, but I think that we'll probably see how this next month goes, and, and we might offer a Zoom-type meeting to the park board if they're interested, but without, you know, with us cutting back spending, there's a lot of projects that we don't have to approve or talk about, so it's, we're just moving along, doing our normal day-to-day activities, and that's about it, so.
I skipped a road. Tim, would you like to get us up to speed with the planning commission?
We did not have a May meeting. Our next scheduled one is next Tuesday.
And from Port Authority, Chad, or Tyler, do you want to share anything from the port?
I can speak on behalf of the port. The port met last, at their last regular scheduled meeting. They did agree to offer another round of loan opportunities for businesses in the area. So we are, we put an ad in the paper, and we've got, we tweaked the application sum, and that's been out there, so we're waiting for those to come in, if they do come in. The, the loan program, the original loan program resulted in $80,000 in loans to local businesses, and I'd like to commend Tyler and staff for handling that, and they've been doing a great job getting the checks out. We're doing it on a proactive basis, so we're actually paying suppliers for these businesses rather than just giving them a lump sum of money to safeguard those funds. So that's been a very successful program, we're happy with that. The Port Authority also recommended the use of the Glander Building to the, the front half of the Glander Building to the Wabashaw Area Food Shelf. I did not put that on this agenda yet until I'm a little more comfortable with the exact space and the area that's needed. Dave Woodley from the Port Authority, as well as just a community volunteer, is kind of helping spearhead that project with Chris Simonson from the food shelf. So with, there's been a need to get them out of the hospital beforehand, or before COVID, and now even more urgent to get them out with COVID that's going on. The, I can give the update on the Army Corps stuff, since that truly is a, a Port Authority We are really, we are finalizing this middle of the revised proposal, which will be the start of the 217. Like I mentioned last month, that's simply a cleaning up of some verbiage that they wanted to see, so we are doing that as we speak. That, that letter should go out this week yet. We're also, and have spent a lot of time assessing the permitting path for what would be required of the property for a potential port site. So we've been working with Brian Mullman, Bolton and Mink to do that. We also are going through in depth the operational costs of a port and the costs of transferring the, basically, the dredge spoils, the sand, to its final resting place, so we're really doing a deep dive on those numbers and costs to ensure that the city of Wabashaw is fairly compensated, and that the project is successful. So lots to come on that in the very near future. There's been a lot of progress and a lot of work being done. In fact, we probably will have some stuff going in front of the planning commission here very soon, so. That is the gist of the Port Authority meeting.
I have a question, Chad.
Go ahead, Neen.
Will the wells near the pit there, the residence wells be tested and checked when they're, they start filling that in? The port's going?
Certainly something that we can discuss, because whatever's going to be done through the planning commission will be an interim use or some type of permit that'll be required from the city to do that, so that'll certainly be a condition to discuss.
I've had a couple of contacts meet about that.
Excellent. Well, make sure that they, just give them that feedback, that that stuff will all go through the planning commission at first, and then ultimately too. And I see if councilperson Walrick can take note of that for when that stuff comes also, so.
Sounds good, thank you.
Great. Anything from utilities?
Yeah, Sylvie Smith yesterday, very quickly, we approved a invoice for sewer lining, and then learned about our wastewater treatment facility permit that's overdue, not by any fault of ours, that's in a draft form, learning about that, so that'll get approved and updated at some point here, but that's about it.
Great, thank you.
Could I ask what, what are the plans for sewer lining?
It's already been done, we just approved a payment for it. It's the CIPP lining of the San Terry Sewer.
All right.
Thanks for those updates. Anyone else have any good news or updates they'd like to share?
I'll just take along on councilperson Woodley's comments on the utilities. I just received notice today, we were expecting Quam in the neighborhood to redo some of the 2016 linings, I believe, or to video them or do some testing through some warranty work, and they told us they were going to be here last week. We notified residents, they were not. They're coming up very fast against their timeframe. We still have an enforceable bond that we actually threaten them with today, and that has taken way too long to get, and it has not been, it has not been the easiest contract that we've entered, so.
Okay. Anything further? Chad, did you get any chat help that somebody was trying to get through on a public comment?
I did not, but people, I know some people have added and subtracted and added and subtracted, or come on and come off, so if they do have something they want to say probably now before.
Right, before we get into the bulk of the agenda, so if, I'll again, just a little unconventional, but just, I'm opening a welcome for public comment. If you've joined late or had any trouble getting on, you'll see a red microphone at the lower left-hand corner of your own image. You can check, click that with your mouse, and you will be able to speak. Just announce yourself by name and your residence, and go ahead and share with us what you'd like to say.
Well, the person that interjected the group chat was Bill K at 224 Third Street East. My mistake, I guess I'm new to some of this, but I was interested in the fact that we're making a payment on sewer lining, when my understanding is sewer lining was done long ago. And before we go to that, I guess part of my concern, and I understand there's a process here, but that's part of my concern here with city council processes, and I'm not saying there's anything wrong with your process, but as citizens watching the agenda, the progress of the meeting, and we have questions that come into our minds, we can't really interact real time, and that's a, that's a disadvantage, I guess. So that's a secondary statement.
Yeah, I can speak to the sewer lining bill first and foremost. That's ongoing. We will continue to be knocking off portions of town as we go. There was one that was done in 2016, and then there was one that was bid in 2018 and 2019. As far as meeting practices and decorum, typically when the meeting goes on, even if, even if we're live here in council chambers, there's not a give and take with the public. The time for the public to interact would be their public comment, or at a time before or after the meeting by council, by contacting their councilperson or the mayor. So I think in this case, Mayor Duran's being a little more lenient because of the use of technology, and I answered your group chat here thing, but I also answered it the other way. Now, that's obviously something that can be looked at, but I know that there's a lot of language and a lot of information shared from the League of Minnesota Cities and other institutes on how the, the meeting will be ran, and that's up to the mayor, and I'll let Mayor Duran comment.
You know, Robert's rules of order are not, they're not, they're awkward at times, but they're, they're there for a purpose, so yeah, I'm, I'm being, you know, I'm trying to be gracious, because technology, Robert's rules were not created in the event that we would all be in our living rooms. And so this is an unusual meeting where we have a lot of members of the public during a Zoom call, so I, normally I can make eye contact and read body language if somebody wants to speak, and even ask before a meeting if people would like to speak, and, and we just don't have that same environment. But we welcome your feedback at any time, and I also will say as sort of a public, since there are so many members of the public on, and many of you maybe already know this, that the agenda is posted well in advance, typically on Thursdays prior to a city council meeting, so members of council are not discussing, we are not to discuss the agenda until we convene, that's our, that's our obligation, and none of our, you know, our input really stands until we make a decision as a, as a governing body, but we very much welcome feedback you might have with us. Agenda comes out on Thursday, the sooner the better, obviously, because if it's something that we need to communicate with staff on, you know, we can't be expected to reach them over the weekend. So if you can reach out to your city council members, or always, I'm always open to feedback as well, even if you just don't know what an agenda item is about, we can certainly look into that for you. And then if you have public comment, you can certainly always make that. Hopefully, we'll be back to in-person meetings. At this time, you know, 10 or more gathered is still not accepted, and so this particular city council meeting, you know, I just want to be clear that we're just getting feedback that we've tried to normally get at the podium in a meeting, so. And now, unless we have anything further, I'll take our administrator's report from Chad.
I'll actually let Ed Graner start that with the ambulance report, if he's got anything to share there. You're unmuted. There you go.
I just pulled my stuff in line too, so. Basically, this week, this month, we've currently had an uptick in a lot of transfers, and getting kind of back to normal to where we've been on run calls and different things, but no COVID issues, nothing of that nature, staying pretty even keel. We can handle everything with our PPE, we're doing well. On the good side of everything, we've actually ended up with a, we applied for a grant again, and we ended up getting awarded a $17,450 grant. So with the two grants that we've added, it's pretty close to $27,000 that we've brought in in the last couple of months. So that'll help out with our shortfalls from March timeframe and hiring new, new people in the process.
Those were very timely. Thank you very much, Ed.
Mm-hmm. So other than that, we, we did some CPR class. We have the people do their classes online, and then we do their practicals in-house, and we just kind of separate them, keep them spaced out the way they're supposed to be, kind of allow them in the, like a certain room in a, at a time, and then we clean after one person's done, and then we allow another one to come in. So CPR is being done, the teaching of it. Other than that, that's about all I have. Any questions?
For my update, Mayor Duran, for the most part, we're getting back to our new normal, I'm calling it. Most staff is here, or is on-site at, at their location. We're continuing to clean, distance, all those types of things, where practical and how we can. We are continuing, just like everyone else, to review and implement the orders as written. We're a municipality, I don't feel that we have the flexibility, at least as staff, to interpret them any other way than other what is, than other, other than what is written. I was going to comment on the grant for the ambulance, Ed took care of that. I also wanted to kind of throw out a kudos to all of our staff for dealing with what we've had to deal with, just like everybody in the, in the real world. It's been a, I see that John has just joined us, or in the process of joining us.
Chad, when you turn toward your notes, we lose you a little bit.
Okay, I'll make sure I speak here. All of our departments have stepped up with this, you know, we've had to, you know, we had a lot of headaches at first, trying to work remotely, but still serve the purpose. Yeah, some things might have been missed, we've done a, I think our staff has done a great job. A lot of our staff, just like everyone else, has kids, and the kids were thrust upon us at home, and things have been kind of chaos for everybody, and then we turn around and have the, the incidents of this past week, so, you know, things are, things are moving along, we're continuing to see progress on things, projects. You know, the library was great during this, this period, they were able to do some things via the, the internet and social media. Tony, Pat, their crews, the banners, helping the businesses get up and running here this last week, the ones that, that requested it. Our fire, ambulance, there's been a couple of crazy calls here, one was in the paper, and one was, both were in the paper now, both in River Systems, so we're lucky to have the folks we have and do what they do. So I think city hall staff, you know, there's been a lot of turnover here, and we've been jostling things around, changing duties, and things have, you know, everyone's really pitched in where, where it's been needed, so. Yeah. That's what I got, Mayor.
Super, thank you. Yeah, I echo all those kudos. I really appreciate everything that's been done, and, you know, I'm on a mayor's listserv where people are asking what can be done, and I should actually be more responsive, because I'm really proud of what our city staff have been able to accomplish. You know, their cities are thinking about all the same things that our, that our city has, what about graduation? How do you acknowledge this? You know, what about these restaurants that now are being asked to kind of tweak what they do in a way that's not clear, whether it will help them or not? So, you know, all the practical things that public work staff has done to make that possible, it's very appreciated, and we have, we have an agenda item specific to that latter issue, so I echo that. Thanks so much to everybody. All right, so we have on our consent agenda a number of items. We have the annual liquor license and beer license renewals. We have approval of our May 5 council minutes, and approval of our May 18 special council minutes, that was to just make a decision about the pool. We have approval of the board of appeal and equalization minutes. We have approval of a cigarette license for, let's see here, for the sale of business closing on June 1 for Rivers Crossing BP, and we have the League of Minnesota Cities Liability Coverage waiver form, and we have the warrants with the addition that Chad mentioned at the beginning for the drug, drug testing for staff. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I move.
Do we have a second? We have a motion from, we have a second from Brian Mullman. Okay. I heard Tim's, I saw, I saw Brian, I could hear Tim. We'll take the motion from councilmember Falcom, and a second from councilmember Walrick. Any further discussion? And we'll do a vote by roll. Chad, you want to call us?
Councilperson Falcom?
Yes.
Councilperson Woodley?
Yes.
Councilperson Moyer?
Yes.
Councilperson Sulla?
Yes.
There you go. Councilperson Friedmeier?
Yes.
Councilperson Walrick?
Yes.
Mayor Duran?
Yes. Very good, and we have no-
Councilperson Walrake?
Yes.
Mayor Durand?
Yes. Very good. And we have no public hearing this evening, general business. We have-
Madam Mayor?
Yes, yes, great.
I was wondering, did, did Tony have a report for us this, this meeting?
Oh, for crying out loud. I see Tony? Tony's, Tony's got probably a number of things he wants to share with us. Did you have anything, Tony?
You asked me, I already went.
Okay, you gave us what? Oh, you have parks, yeah, that's right, I'm sorry. But related to public works, did you have anything else to add?
Uh, no ma'am.
Okay, great, thank you though. We have this very important approval before us to fulfill a full-time public works position, however. And we would, if approved, the city would like to fill in the open position with a qualified applicant from the previous round of applications and interviews that were conducted in the end of April 2020.
Good, I'll make a motion.
Very good. We have a motion from Dean Moyer, do we have a second?
Walrake will second.
We have a second from Tim Walrake. Any further discussion? Hearing none?
Mayor, let me just clarify, so this motion is to fill the position and then after this position, or to refill this position and then after this motion, we will present that candidate?
Correct, yeah.
Excellent, okay.
Very good. So hearing no further discussion, we would take a roll call vote.
Councilperson Woodley?
Yes.
Councilperson Walrake?
Yes.
Councilperson Sulla?
Yes.
Councilperson Friedmeier?
Yes.
Councilperson Moyer?
Yes.
Councilperson Falcon?
Yes.
And Mayor Durand?
Yes.
Counsel, I'll simply start this conversation, then I'll ask that Tony who participated with Clerk Wendy Bush on the interview process, I believe Dylan Herter was a part of it, but I'd like to present Austin Little. I emailed his resume to you this morning. There was some issues with the current employer where we did not want to publish anything until the position was approved. And now that the position is approved, I would recommend Austin Little and I'll ask Tony to make a few comments on that.
We had a, we had a really good interview process, which thankfully was not that long ago. And like Chad and I have said before, we had the top two candidates were, were very, very good and, and we had a tough choice in making that decision. So this one was, was even easier because we already had a person interviewed and ready to go. So qualifications looked like he has a good mechanical ability, good learning ability, prior military experience. And with those three things put together, I think we have somebody that we can, young that we can train and mold and hopefully be around a long time.
Very good. Would you like us to formally have a, do you want a, a motion to approve this particular individual? Is that where you're at in the process? They've been-
Yes, they've actually passed, we've already done the background check and all the, all the other, excuse me, all the other things that were needed to approve this, this person.
So we could make a motion, we could entertain a motion to approve Austin Little for the full-time public works position that is, that we just approved opening?
I'll approve.
We have a-
Second.
Very good. We have a motion from Councilperson Woodley, we have a second from Councilperson Walrake. Do we have any further discussion? Good, I'm glad you have somebody that you were enthused about. I know you're very busy and, and need this position filled, so wonderful.
We will, Mayor, Mayor, we will bring both of these candidates, even if it is a Zoom meeting next month, we will bring both of these new public works techs to the, to the table, so to speak. Hopefully it's face to face, but if it's not, we'll bring them to a Zoom meeting so the council can meet them. Otherwise, they're, we're both planning to start on or around June 15th, so feel free to reach out to Tony and maybe go up and meet them at the city shop.
Great, great. All right, so we have a motion and a second. And any further discussion, otherwise we'll take a vote by roll.
Councilperson Sulla? Councilperson Sulla?
Yes.
Walrake?
Yes.
Falcon?
Yes.
Friedmeier?
Yes.
Moyer?
Yes.
Woodley?
Yes.
Mayor Durand?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yeah. Wonderful. Okay, now, item general business 10-2, we have our liability and property insurance info, including the agenda packet. The city's annual liability property insurance renewal breakdown is provided. There's an attached note in the agenda, in case you didn't see that, the city's premium increased about 12%. City, the city carries a $2,500 property deductible and a $500 deductible applies to municipal liability and auto liability and auto physical damage and other related auto coverage. So we have that here provided to us in the form of the letter attached.
We actually, we budgeted for this increase, so we knew some of this was coming based on the appraisals that had occurred the previous year.
And so the action you need from us is to approve or decline this-
Right.
This policy?
This is Moyer, I'll make a motion to approve.
Very good. We have a first from-
Friedmeier, a second.
We have a second from Friedmeier. Any further discussion? Okay, great. All those, what we'll call by roll, sorry, first cabinet, we'll call by roll.
Councilperson Woodley?
Yes.
Moyer? Moyer?
Yes.
Friedmeier?
Yes.
Sulla?
Yes.
Walrake?
Yes.
Falcon?
Yes.
Mayor Durand?
Yes. All right, approved unanimously, very good. Now we have an item that I'll give you some context for, you may have heard from your own constituents. I was provided a letter on the 27th of May by Stacy Hant, who owns Stacy's Kitchen, and shared with me that she became aware that the city of Rochester was going to be advocating for two elements that they feel may advantage restaurants and bars as they begin to reopen. The, I think the general consensus, perhaps not amongst the restaurant associations, who I'm sure have been involved in the discussions, but in the run-of-the-mill establishments and those who own them, were very surprised that the June 1 reopening dial turned only for outdoor spaces. I think everybody was anticipating some level of caution, cautionary indoor opening. And so Stacy's letter, I should say, the, the mayor of Rochester's letter, Kim Norton's letter, on behalf of herself and, and her city council, indicated that they advocate for two additional measures to be considered by the state. And those measures are outlined in the letter that is included in our agenda packet. I'm having trouble opening it here. Anyway, I, by memory, can tell you that it is to, the state allowing the authority of cities to permit non-contiguous or not, you know, non-attached spaces for dining and liquor. I understand there's, there's liquor liability elements there at play, but that particular consideration and probably more important, based on my conversations with other restaurant owners, more important to our local businesses, the urging of 25% indoor capacity with all of the same safety measures that are expected of, of these new outdoor dining permissions in place, so social distancing, masks, et cetera. I discussed this with Stacy and then I followed up with four other businesses and they all sort of echoed the same thing. That would be, that 25% is meaningful for them. So Stacy allowed me to share her consideration of this for her own establishment, I think, I think she said three, four tops, which begins to look, which can be done with six feet, you know, given her floor plan, and you can kind of envision yourself in other establishments and kind of figure why this would be impactful. That's more like a typical morning to have, you know, that level of business. You're still asking people to adhere to certain policies that the state is mandating, but she really urged that we would support that. I asked the other establishments that I called, all of whom, except one, have remained open, so they're, they're living with these changes day by day. They all said that, you know, obviously 25% is not going to be sufficient for them long term, but it would definitely help now if that would be considered. And obviously, safety measures included, they're very concerned about the implications of trying to do outdoor, just based on weather considerations like today and yesterday. So these first two days, they've had to experiment with this new flexibility, particularly hopeful for them. Some of them have, have requested and the city has made good on this offer, the barricades and tables that have been presented, they're not, they're not sitting on their hands. Nobody could understand how they would make a non-contiguous space work, but said, why not keep it in there? Who knows, maybe somebody will come up with an idea. And one example is certain, some cities have done sort of, have created sort of an eat street where they, you know, cordoned off portions of the street to allow for people to dine outside. Our restaurants, it sounds like a couple of them have felt that would be useful, either in the front or back of their building and coordinated with the city, to utilize short-term parking spaces to make that possible. I am not attached to these particular items, they seem to be favored by our local business community. I continued up until today to invite additional ideas. Nobody was able to come up with anything unique, except that everybody's hoping that this support would be there. It says nothing to, you know, what the public's response would be. We don't, you know, nobody's forced to enter these, the premises, people may continue to do takeout and be fine with that. But I, you know, I'm personally committed to, to furthering this and allowing individuals to make that choice, you know, depending on their own, I guess, calculation of risk, to be frank. So I welcome thoughts or feedback about the letter and any other ideas that others may have had or thought of. And I did communicate mostly with just, with John and Chad about this. Chad relaying, you know, to staff what, what the city might be able to do and being inventive there and then John thinking about it from a port authority standpoint. But if anybody else has feedback, I really welcome it.
So if this is, this is a letter going to the legislature? And is that in case they have a special session, would be considered then?
It's actually directed to the governor and we could also add the, the deed commander Grove, I mean, that's, I didn't do that. I just, I copied substantially the format and the rationale provided by Rochester's letter. So Kim Norton's letter was directed to the governor. And there is also a portal, you know, on the, on the state's page where feedback should be entered. And I think if we're gonna, if we're in favor of a letter like this, I'd probably be inclined to put that feedback into that portal too. I don't know how all this feedback is being managed, I'm sure it's overwhelming, but-
I think Mayor CCing our- Go ahead, Craig.
Is it the governor's decision if, if they were to do this?
Well, the governor's orders, the governor's orders are the restrictions that, you know, the current restrictions are based on those executive orders. So I think that, I'm sure that was the thinking behind their direction, the governor.
Okay.
And I would, we would CC our, or not our local, but well, yeah, our local legislators and Representative Haley, Senator Goggan.
Yeah, they always appreciate, they always appreciate being in the loop.
Mayor, I have a few comments. So first, I want to thank, I know Chad sent out an email earlier about public works and the city staff working with some businesses to get some outdoor seating. I think it's a great step in the right direction. I think this is a great tool at least to use to send to the governor and start expediting some of this. My two comments are, is I would like to see the 25% increase and I also would like to be a little bit stronger wording on how immediately we should do this, the governor should do it. That's my two questions. I know in the letter it says we encourage that the following permitted as swiftly as possible, but we can't have this extended out three, four more weeks either. So I, that's my two comments. I would like to see either it say immediately or, and the other thing would be, I'd like to have it say 50% use of indoor space. That's my comments on that.
Related to that issue, Tim, thank you for that feedback. This occupancy issue, it's not occupancy of the tables in their establishment, it's occupancy by the fire marshal code. So I think that, you know, that, that bears sort of contemplating. I don't know, for instance, what the capacity, fire marshal capacity at Stacy's Kitchen is, but just so you're thinking about the context, it's, it's not allowing them to say 50% of their seats can be utilized, it's 50% of their fire marshal capacity. Anything further?
I just want to say, I think it's a pretty good letter, but like I agree with Tim, it should be a little bit more adamant about this needs to be done now. And also this occupancy thing, I believe it also, that's, the staff members are included in this 25% occupancy too, so there's still pretty heavy restrictions on use of their own private property.
So do you echo the 50%, Jeff? Is that what you're, would you second that, so to speak?
Yeah, I mean, it should be increased as much as, it should just, everything should be opened up, you know, that's the bottom line.
Yeah, I think it's meant to be thoughtful and respectful of the process, which we all know is a complex one. You know, I, you can cer, I mean, anyone can certainly urge that, you know, that if your sentiment is that, you certainly are free to share that, I think, from a, from a governing body. We need to be precise in what we're, what we're saying we think is, is feasible, you know, specifically with regards to our community. I think that's the other thing, is we're not speaking on behalf of the state, we're speaking on the behalf, we're speaking for our, you know, our constituents. And I think that, that was the tone of the Rochester letter, remember, we're Destination Medical Center, we have to do our, you know, our businesses will have to be in keeping with the most stringent safety protocol in order to gain the trust of the public, so to speak. So, you know, I'm, I'm looking for that feedback that represents our, our citizens and our business community. Not all citizens would be in favor of this, I can tell you that's been shared with me. And I'm personally conflicted about, you know, what my own behavior would likely be if, if they did have 50% occupancy. If I can sit outside comfortably, I probably still will. So, you know, the, the, the personal tension I feel and try, you know, is about my own, my own decision-making, but I want to advocate for our businesses in a responsible way if we can.
Emily, I'm, I'm satisfied with the letter. I think it, it reads well. It is, it still makes the statement that we'd like to see something happen. And I'm happy to see, thank you Chad and Sidney and everybody for getting what they've done for these restaurants done. If we, as a city or as a chamber or a combination of all those things, I'm all for it. So I think there's maybe other things we all think about a little bit that we can do for these, these, these operators. But as it stands now, I would, I would support the letter as it is.
Okay, any other feedback or does anybody want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second it. Friedmeier, second.
Are you, Dean, to clarify, are you making a motion to approve it as is?
Yes.
Okay. We have a motion, we have a second. We have a motion from Councilmember Moyer and we have a second from Councilmember Friedmeier. We've heard some comments, does anybody want to discuss further the suggestions that were made or a way to incorporate them or, or, or move on with the way it stayed?
You know, to me, 50, 25, we're all just guessing what, what's gonna be worse, better. I guess I'm in favor of going to 50 with Tim and Jeff and, you know, trusting the establishments themselves to regulate how they see fit. That's my comment.
So this is gonna take, we're gonna send the letter out to the governor and he's gonna do what he's gonna do. So it's gonna take a while for anything to happen. I think by that time, if, we might be at close to a 50%. So I can go at 50% too, but I don't know if any of this is gonna happen, but if you want to send out a letter in support of it, I think that's fine too.
Mayor, you're muted.
Thanks. I, I share that sentiment. I, I don't, I don't want to render us, you know, powerless even in our own minds, but I think, you know, the wheels are in motion. Reopen the economy, then nobody can stand this, you know, any level of restriction that isn't warranted. So, you know, it's, I don't, I don't want to say it's a formality, I'm very serious about the support of our businesses. This is one thing we can do, probably more meaningfully is what the city staff have done, thanks to all involved, and anything else that we can conceive of, and certainly the port's support. Do we need to vote? If, if, I'm hearing a sort of a majority saying that they're fine with 50% in the letter, though the motion seconded is for the letters, it stands, we need to vote that and see if it fails and entertain a different motion?
Yes.
Okay, why don't we do that? Let's, let's call for a roll.
Councilperson Falcon?
No.
Councilperson Walrake?
No.
Friedmeier?
No.
Sulla?
No.
Moyer?
No.
Woodley?
No.
Mayor Durand? You're muted again, there you go.
Thank you. We can entertain a new motion then, given the discussion.
I'll make a new motion of 50% occupancy.
I'll second.
Thank you, we have a motion by Dean Moyer, we have a second by Jeff Sulla. Any further discussion? We'll have a roll call vote.
Walrick.
Yes.
Falcon.
Yes.
Friedmeyer.
Yes.
Sulla.
Yes.
Woodley.
Yes.
Moyer.
Yes.
Mayor Duran.
Yes.
Mayor, we will make these changes and, and get this submitted through the portal as well as CC'd to our legislators.
Very good, thanks, everybody. And really, if anybody can think of anything, I know these, this vulnerable group, by virtue of their, sort of their, the nature of their business, but certainly by virtue of these orders, you know, they are, they are frightened, to say the least. Anything you can do to support them personally?
I have one question.
Yeah, go ahead Dean.
Are we allowing them to use like parking spaces and stuff for now or like they've done in the past?
Yes, Councilperson Moyer, we did, we worked with the businesses to section off or, yeah, section off, barricade off, the ones that requested it now. Others have not, but if they do in the future, we'll, we'll accommodate that as well, so. Tony.
And that was heard, strongly urged by the governor when these May 20th descriptions of the restrictions were made. And, you know, we, it was heated right away. The LMC has urged us to do that. So you'll, I think we'll hear more and more cities trying to, trying to think creatively about that. Doing zoning changes.
Mayor, I'd like to make a quick comment, too, on this whole process. You know, this, you know, Stacy's been great about leading this initiative. She originally came through our Facebook, just making a comment, opened everything up. And we, we share that frustration, but this was the right steps, going through yourself, the council people. I would also encourage the businesses to speak up to the legislators themselves. You know, social media is getting way overused right now for way too many things. People need to hear face-to-face conversations rather than, or, or handwritten letters or emails rather than social media. I mean, we can't do anything at the city. You know, we share the frustrations of everybody in the public, but using, using the city as a sounding board, you know, we've seen several, several comments over the last couple of months on these items. And there's nothing we can do. I mean, it's, talk to your legislators, talk to your council people, talk to the mayor.
And I'm always willing, as a mayor, to advocate on behalf of anyone who needs to communicate with their legislator and either finds that too time-consuming or intimidating or confusing to do so. Have a regular conversation with us, we, we, we can make that connection, they want us to. But yes, Facebook is a terrible place to try to get yourself heard. And I also want to be clear for anybody listening that, you know, and we all know this, but it bears repeating that our, our authorities as, as cities are state and, they're enabled by statute. We don't, we don't have any kind of a special authority to usurp our, you know, the state's authority. And so while that may seem frustrating and we know personally these individuals and businesses, that is, that is our, that is our responsibility legally. And, and the league has echoed that. There's been some chatter on the mayor's listserv about, you know, do we really have to pay attention to this stuff? And the league has really very resolutely and calmly reminded us of, of, you know, our role and it's an important one. So we need to advocate and be, you know, provide strength where we can and provide, you know, provide conduits of messaging where we can, and we welcome that, so. Thanks.
You went to mute. There you go.
Thanks. This item 10-4, I believe we're on, sorry, I lost my agenda. Is related to the fact that our beach is open, which may or may, there may or may not be public awareness of that, although it's been very well utilized. And our splash pad remains closed. We, we talked in our special meeting about whether we move that decision down a ways. It's still very early technically, you know, pools cannot still, cannot open. And attached to that, I think it's, the clarity is not there for me about whether splash pads can open or not. I looked pretty frantically for many times today, looking for some specific guidance on that. What I did see was an LMC webinar from the 14th of May, which seems like a long time ago now, on COVID-19 for parks and rec. And their recommendation at that time, and this was with regards to, you know, liability as well as public health, was that splash pads, now ours is experimental because we only had it for a short period of season last year, are often crowded and could exceed recommended guidance for gatherings. The recommended guidance for gatherings is still no more than 10. And they indicated that if, if cautious opening occurs for facilities such as splash pads, that signage for social distancing, monitoring of capacity and above all, an aggressive disinfecting strategy should be in place. So with that, I don't know if Tony or Chad, if you have anything to say from a, from a staff standpoint about what it would take for those measures to be in place? But we could have a little discussion about what, what we think might be possible moving forward.
I can start. Tony and I talked today several times, as well as you, Mayor. I would be in favor of posting signage at the splash pad, varying size. You know, letting the public have a try at self-regulating themselves. We can monitor it at least during business hours here from City Hall. We also have a camera in that area that can pick up the area. As far as off-hours, you know, we can certainly have a, an officer roll through there periodically. But from the operational side, I didn't think, after, I'll let Tony talk about it, but I didn't think there was too many obstacles there. Tony?
No, I, I've ran this by a few people and I also talked to Dylan about it. If there was some way that we could have a timer go off and then people could rotate, we, we kind of, we're kind of thinking that people might get frustrated if they're not able. You know, if they're gonna stand there for an hour and wait to use the splash pad and nobody's gonna move, there might be some pressure. And I'm just trying to think of something off the wall of some sort of a timer that goes off every 15 minutes. That group leaves, a new group goes in. The other thing was limiting a certain age in there, possibly to eight years and younger or, you know, seven, six years and younger to try and limit. Because the older kid, you know, the, so to speak, the middle-aged kids can use the beach if they choose to. But just some thoughts or ideas, I, we're not really sure what, but I think we're gonna work on that between now and Friday.
Tony, did you say something in a previous meeting about we have to have the bathrooms open if that's open?
The, so the parks here last week, the parks were able to open when some things changed. They, so when the governor comes out, it was like a, like a date and a bunch of rules. And then in the meantime, we're always getting feedback from, from the Department of Health, the DNR. We're always getting little updates and tweaks to it.
Clarifications.
But they kind of opened up where the parks can be opened up as long as we keep the bathrooms clean and then people have to practice social distancing and, and they also have to practice their own disinfecting, too. And so this is one of them things where the bathroom is already open now because the park is open. And so that's one last thing that we have to worry about with the splash pad. And so that's, you know, that's kind of an easier, that made it a little bit easier for that, so. That answers your question.
Tony, I don't think those, I think those ideas are good and I don't think they're insurmountable at all as far as timer of some kind or some, limiting the ages. That's certainly something we can work through staff-wise. You know, I think if, if the council.
Dylan did say a one-day prep. We gotta pressure wash it, clean it up a little bit. We gotta put the pump in for the discharge water and then turn the water on. So that's a pretty quick process to get that up and running, so.
My only comment would be, I, I mean, I'm fine with opening it and I think it should be the same parameters as our parks. You know, how are we gonna place the social gathering at parks as well? So, I mean, I think it's gonna be the same, same type of issue. But I think adding signage about social distancing and distancing, you use your own disinfectant type of stuff, what we did for parks, I think that would work as, just as well as anything else.
Worth a try and we can always shut it down if we need to.
That's what all of them will come to. If these orders don't change, if, if people don't self-regulate or self-distance themselves and we have to deal with it. We don't want to, we don't want to.
Yeah, the big, the big thing that troubled me with the pool and it's troubling, it's, it's the, I guess it's less troubling. It's just something we can, we can deal with, with regards to this, this issue is, is equity. You know, and when, the idea for me that like at any given time, you know, two families or two groups would be able to be in the pool, that just, how do you make that equitable? With regards to this, you know, I might, I might not be supportive of an age limit because it implies ability. So, you know, somebody with a disability who's 14, who can roll into the splash pad, should be able to do that. So I, I think age is a tricky one, but I hear what you're saying with regard, so I don't know if there's a way to, you know, tape a strike down or something like that to, to remind those kids that are a little bit older, you know, they're probably not gonna be supervised by an adult. You know, if we can think creatively like that. It feels doable. It feels doable that this, that this could occur in our community, given our population. Even though a lot of other cities have chosen so far not to open theirs up, I think it seems like we're on the right track. And, and as you said, if we're not on the right track, we'll, we'll know pretty quickly and we'll have to, you know, adjust accordingly. With regards to the, the beach, I had a little, you know, study session there last night with my own family and ran into Dean. It's the most occupied the beach has ever been. When I've been there, we use the beach quite a bit, but people were very respectful. There were four different family groups. There were two little unsupervised kids who looked about fifth grade and they were doing a great job. They understood when we moved out that they could move into our spot, which they found more appealing. They said, are you, are you guys leaving? So it seems like that can be done. I think, you know, this is gonna be a moment now where we have to realize that it's not the equivalent of a pool, right? It's, it's the river. I, I have my own apprehension about, you know, having a beach down a main channel and, and having kids there unsupervised. People are, they're gonna have to figure out ways to supervise their kids or have them be supervised. Because I think that it's, to suggest it's an alternative to the pool, it's, it's not. It's a beach, as, it is what it is and what it has always been. But I think from a behavior standpoint and signage, it seems like, given the last two hot days, people might be able to manage that.
So I think what we're looking for, Mayor, from the splash pad perspective, is if there's any huge concerns on it, we could see a motion there, but otherwise, I think with the emergency resolution, Tony and myself can move forward with, you know, getting that open with the proper restrictions in place.
Yep, okay, sounds good. Anybody have any, any strong reservations they haven't yet enabled to voice? I know there's, there's a lot of public support for anything, anything that can possibly be this summer.
This is Dean Moyer. I'd be okay with trying the splash pad thing. I would like to just watch the beach area and see how busy that gets. And if it starts getting really busy like today was, I think we really have to look at life guards down there. Supervising anyway, you know, somehow. That's all I have to say.
Dean, I, maybe just to have this discussion now, so we don't have to have it in the future. We did talk about that a little bit today. You know, a, a lot of our lifeguards and most lifeguards are trained for pool rescues and pool, you know, techniques. That river's a beast, as you know. We've, we've since 35 years ago had signs down there that swim at your own risk. I would hate to have a, first I'd hate to have an incident, but to have an incident even with a lifeguard on and that be on the lifeguard that, you know, if you get out in that current and someone's even half your body size, I don't know what you're gonna do, so.
So you look at liability and stuff.
We, we did contact the league and they said it, it, you know, we would be covered liability-wise. We did talk to them for a bit today. They would, but, you know, I think there's a. Yeah, there's a lot that goes on in that discussion, I think.
Appreciate it.
You know, it took me, it took me a little while to, you know, I'm a prairie girl, so I, you know, I grew up in a pool. It took me a little while, I think, to appreciate the inherent dangers of a river, you know? Even people who are skilled get into trouble. So I think, you know, just when we were just talking this through about the comfort level we would have with, you know, assuming that having a lifeguard there means that everyone's safe. It's, it's a, it's a major river. So the thing I would say in terms of safety is I've just recently, for the very first time, seen a pontoon pulled up on the beach a couple of times. And I don't know if it's posted, actually, I don't even know if that's permitted or not. But if it's not permitted, I don't know if it's posted, just to ensure that there isn't a boat incident with regards to someone who's, who's swimming.
So with that, with that respect, Emily, and also with like maybe trying to increase the safety down there, could we rope off a swimming area?
We certainly could, but then, we thought about that and talked about that a little bit, too. You know, the rope would be anchored to the bottom probably with ropes. Now you're creating a, another type of a hazard that someone could get tangled up in.
Well, sometimes, like, wasn't that part of it today, the, the more we do, the more liability we incur? Or wasn't that part of it?
Yeah, I mean, if we put a false, they, if we're gonna do it, I mean, we're covered liability-wise. However, I think from a public perception perspective, the more things we put in place, the more safe or perfect it is. But, you know, that's not the case with the river, in my opinion. I don't want to put a false sense of security out there that the beach is as safe as the pool. You went mute, Emily.
That's, that's well stated. That's basically what I meant, too. I don't, even my own kids, we're thinking about it as this like, you know, swapping of, and it's not. They're two different things.
But I think we will certainly, well, not think, we will certainly continue to monitor to ensure that people are doing what the governor's saying, that the state's saying and that we are, you know.
All right, unless anybody's terribly uncomfortable with this level of kind of caution that we think can be in place with policy-oriented signage, then we don't need to have formal action on that item. Okay, and then we have a resolution for the donations, which are always a wonderful way to end the meeting. Very generous donation of $1,000 to the Rotary Club of Wabashaw, $1,190 from the Friends of Wabashaw Public Library, $25 from John and Sue Hampi in memory of Richard Nelson, $20 in memory of Cindy Walters by the Bev and Bruce Hall, $200 by William Glorida Hager, $20 by David Kennovec, all to the library. $500 donated to fireworks by the Rotary Club of Wabashaw and $300 donated to the police by Kay Jensen. Do we have a motion to approve the generous donations?
I got an addition to that.
Very good.
It's not a monetary donation, but Dave, David Woodley that lives down on Lawrence Boulevard, just down river from Slippery's, has kind of took it upon himself to reestablish a little area just Slippery's that never gets really much attention. And he, he spent a lot of time and his own labor on rehabbing that area. I offered him some material and he said, no, he's taken care of it, but I just wanted to give a thank you for him.
Fantastic, wonderful. With that, do we have a motion to approve the June donations?
I'll second.
I think I heard Jeff with the first and I heard Craig with the second. Any discussion, otherwise we'll call for a roll of vote.
The only thing I'll say, you'll see the fireworks in there, those are scheduled and will be going on. And we'll just ask people to practice the distancing that they need. We need to have some form of a celebration of some kind.
Great, good news. And we'll.
Call for the question.
Approve of the donations.
Councilperson Moyer. Moyer?
Yes.
Councilperson Woodley?
Yes.
Councilperson Friedmeyer?
Yes.
Councilperson Sulla?
Yes.
Councilperson Walrick?
Yes.
Councilperson Falcon?
Yes.
And Mayor Duran?
Yes. We should have our information, the financials, in our emails. I'm sure you've reviewed. And do we have any other announcements? Otherwise, we can entertain a motion to adjourn.
No. Second.
Very good. I think that was Brian and then John, first from Councilmember Woodley and second from Councilmember Friedmeyer. All those in favor, go ahead and call us by roll again, I guess.
Falcon.
Yes.
Walrick.
Yes.
Sulla.
Yes.
Friedmeyer.
Yes.
Moyer. Woodley. Mayor Duran.
Yes.
Thank you all.
Thank you very much, everybody.
Thanks, everyone.
Thanks to the public who participated, we appreciate that. Thanks to the public who participated, we appreciate that. Good night.